Make it four o'clock, so let us start. Thanks for coming to this extra. It's an extra standard meeting. The purpose really was to try and get through before the end of the current council year some of the unfinished business. And so we could go to executive tonight.
We'll go to council next week.
And council next week, yeah. Good, so, um, minutes of the meeting held on the twenty first of January being laid on the table. Are you happy with those?
Yes.
Good. Apologies for absence. I'm aware of some, but Fiona, will you go through the apologies?
Yes, we had apologies from Councillor Mike and Karen Coburn, David Els, David Hunter and Robert Knowles.
Right. We are core it. Three of us will be sufficient. We have four. So disclosure of interests?
None received.
Questions from members of the public?
None.
Questions for members?
None.
Right, the next item is an update on the appointment of independent persons, which I think Robyn's going to deal with.
Oh well, thank you Chairman. So as it says in the report, Waverley participated in a joint recruitment process with a number of other Surrey local authorities, and those are all set out within the agenda papers. The aim was to recruit at least three independent persons, and we had comments from this committee last time round that the more the merrier, the more the better. And they would be recruited for a four-year term commencing in May twenty nineteen. So in response to the advert, a really good response, four of the existing independent persons put forward an application, had three further individuals apply to be appointed. All of the consortium members were consulted in all seven applications, and on the basis of the work done by the existing four IPs and on the strength of the applications and interviews led by Guildford Borough Council in relation to the new three individuals, all consortium members are recommending that all seven be appointed. So the list would be as follows. Vivian Cameron, Bernard Quarrel, John Smith, Roger Pett, Bill Donnelly, Paul Leves and Liz Lawrence. It's a strong position to be in, having seven to put forward. And my recommendation to Standards Committee is that you recommend to council that all seven individuals be appointed to the consortium. And any member of the consortium would be able to use any of those seven individuals. Thank you.
Fine, and I think the reason why we thought more than four would be a good idea is because we've got far more councils now sharing those same people.
Indeed.
And, um, you know, we've probably used one quite extensively. Um, and, you know, it's unfair to, I'm sure all the councils can't, so are we?
Do they get paid to be on standby or do they only get paid if they're called?
They are paid expenses.
They're only paid expenses.
Nothing else.
Nothing else.
Excellent idea.
So it doesn't cost anymore having seven rather than four?
That's excellent.
So Chairman Lord is happy with that?
Yeah, thank you for confirming.
Um, are we happy with recommending to council all seven?
Yes.
Yep. I don't know any of them apart from the White House, so that's fine. Good. Then the next item is Members' Code of Conduct. Before the last meeting, we had a few queries and drafting points, I think. And it was asked if you'd come back, and I think Fiona is going to run us through that one.
Yes, assuming that members are happy with, still happy with what they were happy with at the last meeting. And there were a couple of points that specifically, um, members wanted a bit of further work done on. Um, so turning to page, um, let's see, page twelve of your agenda. Um, what's shown there in red just above general obligations as paragraphs seven and eight, that had previously been just one paragraph, and you felt it would be clearer um, if that was split into two so that it was very, very clearly two separate, um, uh, statements, one about the arrangements being used to deal with any complaints, and then one about the, uh, the possible penetraries in respect of failure to disclosure of disclosure of pecuniary interests. So we've done that one. Um, turning over to, um, page, uh...
That, that, that was, sorry to come back to here, the difference is on page twelve is that seven has become seven and eight, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And to one, we, um, we weren't happy on removing everything to say who others were, so we defined others by putting it all in, anyway, it's there before, back in brackets.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, yes. Um, so then going on to page fifteen and the sensitive information within the registration of interests. Um, and, um, the wording that I'd inserted effectively came directly from the, um, the regulations. Um, but it is very funky and legal, apologies to Dan. Um, so I've thinned it out a little bit as far as I can in that we've previously defined what a member is, in that it's, a member in this context is councillor or co-opted member of the council. Um, so I simplified it as far as I can. Um, I think the important thing to note with this, um, paragraph is that it wasn't in the code or it's not in the current version of the code, and it is something that, um, the, we've actually had a letter from the Minister that's gone to all local authorities just this month reminding, um, authorities that under the new regulations or updated regulations, candidates for elections no longer have to, are required, no longer required to publish their address on the ballot papers. And that's sort of responding to the sort of the increased risk of intimidation and abuse of candidates. And that follows through to the registration of interests in that whilst all members have to complete a register of interests, in terms of what is published on the published register of interests, members may speak to the monitoring officer and make a case that some information is sensitive. Um, and if that is in the, in the public domain, it could put them or their family or friends at risk of intimidation or abuse. Um, so including this paragraph in the Code of Conduct is in effect being transparent about the fact we may be less than transparent in the published register of interests, but that is all right, that is allowed within the, um, within the law. Um, so we're being transparent to new members as they come in, so that this is something that you can ask, have a conversation with the monitoring officer about. We're also being publicly transparent with members of the public to say that if you see a, um, a member's register of interests and you expect to see some information and it's not on there, then there may be a very legitimate reason for that. Um, and all we would record is that the information's been recorded, but it's been withheld for sensitivity reasons.
So can I just be clear, the information is recorded confidentially here, but not published?
But not published.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I've tried it hard to believe that you wouldn't have to publish your address, because I mean, one of the declarations of interest that quite often was made is as a planning application from a neighbour next door.
Yeah, I've had it where members, where we have not published members' addresses due to their occupation.
Due to their occupation.
Um, that wouldn't have to be the only reason.
Former councillor Sandy, as a former prison governor, was...
Yeah, we had one at Farnham who was working for DEFRA during the Badger Cold days and, um, her address was withheld.
Right, okay. But this formalizes it, so that it's... Okay.
It's more sort of exception rather than, um, sort of common, but it's just being transparent.
Okay, right.
Um, and then the other paragraph that, um, the committee had a little concern about is paragraph seven under disclosure of interests and participation. Um, which is the, uh, the paragraph that effectively gives a stand in dispensation to members when they're, um, considering councillors' allowances, setting council tax or, um, housing rents in a situation where, um, they are payers of council tax, recipients of council allowances, or if they're a housing tenant and paying, um, rent to Waverley as their landlord. Um, so this cross refers back to paragraph five one, which says that as a member of the council, you will have declared your interests and where you have a, um, disclose for pecuniary interest, you should not take part in any decisions. This effectively gives a dispensation saying, notwithstanding that you don't have a pecuniary interest in relation to setting council tax just because you are a payer of council tax, because it's something that applies to all of the residents in Waverley. Similarly, the, the councillor's house is, it's not just you, it's all the councillors and the housing rent. It's not just you as an individual tenant, it's all the tenants. So it's a little bit belt and braces. Some councils take a regular report to their council to get a specific dispensation. Um, the advice, um, following the, the localism act was that that wasn't necessary. Um, but this is another way of sort of closing off that loop as well, braces.
Right. And one that's gone missing from that section, if I've got it right. Previously, we had ceremonial honor given to councillors.
Yes, that probably wasn't, um...
Couldn't really see it.
No. No, so on reflection, I...
Taken that one out, that's a change. Yep.
So those were the only, um, points that came up, um, from the committee last time.
Okay. Comments, committee? Are we now happy with it? Have you any questions?
I'm perfectly happy. Could I make a couple of comments at the end, just in the light of the fact I might not be here next year?
Well, I'm sure that would not be the case, but...
You never know. No, I've got a couple that I'd like to say about how these things are investigated, which I'd like to leave with people, but I'm happy with what's on the table, yeah?
Yeah.
With your indulgence.
I think when we finish the meeting, we may have a little informal discussion, I think would be the better way of term.
Okay, I'd be very happy with that, yeah.
Because I have thoughts on that too.
Okay, that would be good, thank you.
If we're putting this forward to council, can I just make a point on page eight? We've introduced all, I think I noticed it last time, it says the interest, the interest of inhabitants. We go to nine two D. If I can find it. Describe it slightly differently, which seems to me to be a better description of it.
Persons living in the borough.
Yeah. Um, inhabitants, I don't like it. I don't know, it doesn't say, but further on nine two D, it says persons living in the borough. It's not important to the agreement, but just if we're going forward with it.
Yep, we can certainly change that.
And then it's five four D, isn't it? That you were unhappy?
Yes. Yes, it's five four, it's five four D where it comes, the word inhabitants.
Okay. Right, so do we formally therefore approve the amendments we are making to the, um, Member's Code of Conduct? And formally amend those amendments to council?
Agreed.
Good. And I think for our information, we also got the, uh, the, uh...
Yes.
Uh, Committee on Standards in Public Life document. And the idea is that officers will go through that and see if we need to make any further operations in the result of that.
And I think that, that review will include the arrangements for considering complaints and so holding hearings. And, um, the other, um, document that we have in the, in the suite for standards is the planning, uh, Members' Planning Code of Good Practice. And councillor Mullinow, in, in light of some of the email correspondence that's been going around about developers inviting councillors to site visits, councillor Mullinow's made some suggestions about, um, how the wording of the section particularly on site visits could be clarified to, uh, to sort of take away any avoidance of doubt about how members should be responding to that. So we'll, we'll take on board his, um, his views as well, because it's interesting to see the perceptions of members as users of the code. Um, so we'll, we'll wrap all, um, the, that sort of really, we'll roll three parts into one, uh, one piece of work and bridge in the last, can you see?
And learning from the recent hearing, I mean, we've only had the one hearing since the...
The new rules came in.
So it clearly makes sense to, you know, consider whether there's any lessons learned from that.
Yeah, well, I have comments on that and comments on, on my own experience, but I'm very happy to do it afterwards rather than in this forum.
And then it will come back formally afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good, so we approve all that?
Um, sorry, can I ask a question on the code? And there seems to be quite, quite significant change to the roles of parish councillors within there in terms of passing responsibilities down. You will be discussing that with parish councils?
We will be, we'll be looking at, and I think the, the, um, one of the main ones is parish councils effectively adopting the, the code of their principal authority. And that would certainly, um, be helpful from the point of view of the monitoring officer team, because there are some parish councils who, um, adopted the changes that Waverley made in two thousand and sixteen, and there are some who didn't. Um, so we have got a little bit of disparity that, um, in terms of the, um, non-pecuniary interests that may be perceived to have such significant weight that they should be considered as a, um, prejudicial interest for, to use the old fashioned term. That particular clause has been adopted by some parish councils, but not others. Um, and it does create a little bit of confusion.
Well, I would have thought that on the basis that it goes through council next week, that we write to the clerks of all the parish councils.
We always do.
Yes, telling them there's a change. And maybe saying that we as a committee would strongly recommend, but it's up to them, that they do adopt ours, because, you know, a lot of thought's gone into it to ensure that councillors are helped rather than hindered. And that, um, if you have already adopted our two thousand and sixteen version, you no doubt want to adopt this one. And those that haven't may wish to reconsider the decision.
Yes, okay.
So a strong steer from the committee.
Yeah.
Particularly as we deal with the hearings.
Well, I was going to say, if we...
We must have heard to have one rule.
If we're, if we're doing the hearing, do we judge them against our code or against theirs?
Against their own code.
Their own code. So we have to adapt ourselves to, not that it's happened yet, but it had an implication to an already minefield of problems. So you can have a councillor, two-hatted councillor who's running on two different codes.
Yes.
At the same time.
Yes.
Could happen.
Could happen.
You could have a triple hatage.
And three, yeah.
Three times the opportunity to get them.
To get it wrong. Because they've adopted one council's code to the wrong council and no mistake. Okay, so we'll put that in, uh, as part of our...
Yes, that's a good idea, thank you.
Okay, good. Well, if we now move on, and then think down to go to deal with this one.
Yeah.
Uh, the, um, scheme of delegation amendments.
Thank you, Chairman. So you'll remember that this was one of the matters that came before the twenty first of January. There were three aspects of the proposed revisions, um, then, where you asked for some, uh, some clarity. So they are highlighted on pages fourteen, forty-one. They are section eight A, which, um, is marked as new in estimation, not very excitingly. And, um, uh, seven, and then on the next page, page forty-one of your paper, seventeen and seventeen A. Um, so eight A was around, um, the prudent adoption of increase, of new or increased charges during the financial year as opposed to, so outside of full council, the budget setting process. And there was some question there about parking charges in particular, about whether the delegation scope to increase parking charges through, through the course of the year. So the financial regulations, the council's financial regulations state that the fees and charges should, are to be reviewed as part of the budget process or where appropriate more frequently. They're approved by full council unless covered by a delegated authority, and budget holders are, are to ensure that up-to-date fees and charges are published. The proposed delegation to the section from, section one five one officer in consultation with the portfolio holder for finance would avoid the need to take new or revised fees and charges to the council every year and avoid potential loss of income while waiting for a scheduled council meeting. Um, the setting of car parking charges is, is subject to its own special regime, and they are not included in the schedule of fees and charges. So...
But isn't the wording that we've now got on eight A new the same as we had in eight A new last time?
It is, because we've clarified for you the fact that the, uh, the changing to, changes to parking, the parking charges is not something that can be dealt with, um, outside of, it's, it's not, they're not within the schedule of fees and charges.
All the wording in eight A that we've got on our agenda is identical, every word, to the eight A that we had on, in January.
So, so the setting of fees and charges for car parking would have to come, it always comes to...
Full council, yeah.
Shouldn't it say that in the, in there for clarity, someone reading that? We know it's...
I think I apologize that it doesn't need to, because it's covered by the second statute.
Well, I think it's fine, well. But then what we have got new, that we didn't have at the last meeting, is it eight B, isn't it?
Uh, that was, that was there at the last meeting.
Is it?
Yes, yeah.
I'm looking at the, um, um, the agenda. These are the two, isn't it? I only got off a plane late last night, but, um...
Eight, eight B was there, the silver vision was in there last time.
Obviously it wasn't in the table.
It wasn't in the table.
Oh, I see, it's in the, sorry, it was in the amended version of the scheme.
Right, okay, fine. Yeah, sorry, I interrupted, go on.
No, thank you, Chairman. Um, to pick up councillor Gray's point, should it be, I think the danger is that you get into a situation where you start putting every exception back into the scheme of delegation and you end up with a scheme as long as the one that we had last time previously, which is the aim was to...
But the normal person reading this would assume it would include car parking charges, that's... And we asked that question and you've given us clarification, that's my only reason for reading it.
It says so specifically, it doesn't include car parking charges. The last sentence of eight A. Full council will continue to approve the complete schedule of fees and charges as part of the...
Doesn't say anything about car parking.
Car parking, okay.
There are a number of other things it also doesn't mention.
I mean, it should say perhaps a complete schedule of all fees and charges.
I, I have a, just a little concern on this, is that if you exclude car parking, which you clarified, effectively there's no need to put anything in front of council, because effectively you're delegating to the section one five one officer and he can just revise the fees during the year. And are we...
Only upwards.
Hmm?
Only upwards.
Only upwards.
New or increased.
Yes, yes, only upwards, well that's all I would want them to go, is upwards.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so, but yeah, my point was only that he would, yeah, they would be authorized.
Should it be limited, should it be limited to new fees?
New or increased fees.
Well, I know it says that, but, um, I can understand the logic for new.
I see, I see your question, I see.
Yeah. I'm a bit teevious, I'm just saying that, you know, to some extent, effectively...
So taking, taking, uh, devil's advocates a bit, I mean, full council, you know, could decide on the fees and charges and then the section one five one officer the next day
Yeah.
could say, actually, between now and the next council, I'm going to increase the charges by X.
Well, it's the next year, isn't it?
Well, no, it's till full council, it says. To avoid a delay caused by submission to a full council meeting for approval, which rather implies that it will come to the next.
It's no obligation, there's no obligation, as I read that, to confirm it to council.
Okay, well, it, you know, what's stopping us therefore, what's stopping the section one five officer, one five one officer? The day after the budget's been approved, increasing all the fees?
I mean, there is always, within the scheme of delegation, it starts from, you know, an expectation of, of trust and proper working. I mean, actually, the scheme of delegation is exactly there to take decisions which would otherwise be taken, you know, within a formal committee and say, no, well, we don't need to do that, we won't, we won't do it. So it doesn't ensure against all of that, but I don't think that it needs to, that's the law.
But it is in consultation with the portfolio and the finance, who would probably throw one blade, to say the least.
Well, it says in consultation, does that mean I told you I've had a discussion, you don't agree with me, but I'm still going to do it?
Chairman, it does come back to, to my answer there, which is, you know, clearly, if the section one five one officer or any officer were to be seen to be misusing the scheme, which I think is what you're saying, not, I know you're referring to our current section one five one officer.
I would, I would for the life of me suggest an officer would be misusing the scheme, I'm just thinking it might be...
I've forgot a practical example of this, so...
As long as it's reported, I, I wouldn't have a problem.
I was down, yeah, two things, so I was going to suggest maybe a post-decision reporting to full council, maybe that would resolve it. But I have got a practical example where this is, this is happening at the moment. So councillors set, you've set the budget and you've determined what the local land charges fee should be, so fees for people applying for land charges searches for the authority. Surrey since then have said that they are going to increase their relevant of the fee. So there's a charge that they make to us when we make inquiries with them as part of that process. They recharge us, we charged an applicant, the resident, they, they then recharge us at the end of each month. They have said they intend to put their charges up by, I think, you know, I mentioned this in a brief, by about around thirty-five percent. And so at the moment, there's a discussion internally about whether we will, you know, conventionally put our charge to the public up by thirty-five percent. Um, which is what we ordinarily do now. I wouldn't, I don't think, you know, it wouldn't be practical to bring that to full council, that would seem to fit within eight A. So there are examples, that's one example where this might have been, but maybe, maybe the position is that the one five one officer reports it to full council at the next available meeting, but I don't know anything about that.
But I think the point's being made is, is what, what is said in the sort of purple box on our agenda, we're, we're very happy with. But of course, the actual authority document, eight A, doesn't have the final sentence in it. Which is, full council will continue to approve the complete schedule of fees and charges as part of the annual budget approval. And I would have thought that sentence would be helpful. Now, am I looking at the wrong, oh, I may be looking at the wrong, looking at two different versions at once.
And subject to the annual approval by council of the complete schedule of fees and charges as part of the budget setting.
Yeah, sorry, that's been put right then. Right, okay. So I'm looking at too much of the agenda to see the changes.
Should we have the word annual in there, because that's on the, is there a reason why we dropped annual budget setting?
Well, we only set the budget annually, don't we?
Sorry, yeah, it just says, actually, it says, it says annual budget approval on the other document.
Well, I can, I can make, um...
I, it just, is there a difference, Sonia?
Not. It does say, subject to the annual approval by council of the complete schedule of fees and charges.
Thank you, I did read that, I'll back it.
Okay, are we happy then with eight A?
Yeah.
Has re-drafted, good. Now we go to eight B, which is new, isn't it? Or is it?
No, eight B wasn't there before.
We can still discuss it, if there are any comments.
Happy to discuss it, Chair.
No, 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 I'm, I'm...
Maybe the number has changed.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at, uh, the previous bit where it stopped. At eight A. And then we went on to nine left blank unused.
That is correct, so shall we be happy to open up for discussion?
Well, I mean, I don't think it was there before, according to my paperwork, but I'm, as I say, I'm slightly jet lagged, because it's... But...
I seem to remember reading something about this, but I can't remember whether it was yesterday or past meeting.
I wonder if maybe I put it into the, um, report, but not...
I think it may have been in the report.
Was it on the, there was a, was there an update sheet?
An update sheet.
It may have been an update sheet.
There was an update sheet last time.
My apologies.
No, no.
Oh, yes.
That's update sheet.
Yes.
Good. Right, are we happy with eight B? Because we've obviously seen it approved before, we've had that.
I'm happy with it.
Good, eight B, right, sorry, we got over eight now, I'm saying, limp along to seventeen.
So seventeen, um... So, yes, the delegation of head of customer corporate services is split. Um, to include the role of investment advisory board, we make recommendations to the executive on certain property transactions. I think it was just councillor Van in particular, last time, had raised this, that's right. So with regard to the delegation of head of service time... So with regard to the delegation head of service, trying to take all actions in relation to the administration of the council's estate and property portfolio, council, the band highlighted that the role of the investment advisory board was not effective in the quality of executive to make acquisitions and disposals of land in excess of two hundred and thousand. So you need to see that we've, we've split this now. Um, and so that a delegation is now, um, in a seventeen and seventeen A. And the reason why it's split out is because we've split out acquisitions and disposals from other property interests. Um, so things like easements, renewal of leases and so on, we haven't, or obviously not disposals for the purposes of, um, the investment advisory board. Um, and so we've taken those out. So now the delegation is, um, with the exception of acquisitions or disposals of land or property in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand, which is reserved for the full council and executive, brackets on the recommendation of the I A B, which does reflect the terms of reference that you have in the other letter term, that's recent terms of reference for the I A B. And now that then leaves, if you like, non-I A B recommended matters, which is, um, the acquisition or disposal of the interest in land or property with value. I wonder whether that should be below two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Um, and then the grant, you know, of leases and, and...
Set prime, which I was...
Sorry, there's the acquisition or disposal of interest in land, yeah. So one is actual, seventeen is acquisition or disposal of land or property, seventeen A is interest in land or property, which the I A B is not concerned, you know, is not concerned with under, under the investment strategy. And then grant you of leases.
Right, okay.
Sorry, that's very long.
Just looking, and then we've got A and B. Do we need the sort of heading seventeen A in capitals? Or should we be doing seventeen A at the very beginning and seventeen B?
You could do, chairman, some...
I mean, I find it a bit odd, finding I've got seventeen.
Is fair to say, chairman, that with the, also with the restructure of the senior management team, heads of service, that the numbering will need to be rewrote anyway, because Robin will, under his various authorities...
It's just that we've got seventeen, which hasn't got any number. It's just seventeen. Then we come into seventeen A with two sub-paragraphs, seventeen little A and B.
The, the reason for it, you're quite right, the reason for it was we've, we've tried for as long as we can to keep the numbering so that previous references to numbers can still, still make sense. But I think officers are saying that, you know, when this next comes forward for a review, we will be changing the numbering anyway.
Because under the, under the main scheme, you have various sub-schemes for each head of service and they, they, they retain the, the same numbering, so when they come to update theirs, they would rather not have to rejig the numbering on there. It just makes things easier.
I have a delegation to be able to change that anyway, because it's just a tidying up matter, so that will happen.
Well, I'm just saying that it reads rather oddly, if I'm seventeen, then, then a big seventeen A.
Well, because you end up talking about seventeen A, little A.
Little A, big A.
Let's skip, we'll, we'll...
Seventeen without any As or Bs at all.
For the purposes of, of putting this through to, to council for approval, um, if you're happy with that, we can just refer to that as seventeen A and seventeen B. Um, and then we'll do a, a sort of comprehensive tidy up of the numbering, um, to reflect the, the new, um...
You see, it might be simpler to have the first paragraph that's in blue, seventeen A.
Yeah.
Then go down to seventeen B, the first bit of the red, and then you get the sub-paragraphs, Roman one and Roman two.
I hate to look backwards, you've got the same in eight though, we've got eight, eight A and eight B.
Okay. If that's going to be tidied up.
We can tidy that up.
Yeah.
In whatever way it's not going to cause total upset.
Does that make sense, though, as to the split of the two, where, why?
Yes, I think it's, it's, the thing that makes it difficult to read is when you're talking about acquisitions of land and interests in land or property.
I know, because you and I know that, that interest in land includes freehold ownership.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, well, we tend to talk internally about interest being, you know, easements and, um, and licenses and...
Do you think we should put interest in bold type?
I think so. But then that'd be awful.
I think it, because you pointed it out, I didn't notice, I didn't notice before.
Good point.
So I think let's put interest in, in bold type.
I mean, it would be nice when you do get time is to put some else-reared terms in.
It's going to be longer than the document in the first place.
Maybe I'll say that, I'll do that when I get time.
I know it's a challenge, but we're trying to get back to putting this as standard anyway, but, um, I think this one might be a challenge.
Okay, sure. Anything else, Dan?
I don't think so, no.
Are we, any questions of Dan on, on those changes?
I, I'm being very stupid, I cannot see the difference between, between seventeen and seventeen A. Could you just repeat that for me? Because the, the words are identical.
They're, 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 they're almost identical, so, so you'll see. Firstly, in seventeen A, you've got the grant, at, at little B, you've got the grant renewal of leases. We deal with leases and which leases need to go up to the executive for approval, so that's anything over twenty, in excess of twenty-five years. So, twenty-five years of low, delegated level. Seventeen deals with acquisitions or disposal, disposals of land or property in excess of ten hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Seventeen A deals purely with the disposal or acquisition of interests in land or property. Um, so we're talking there about things like easements. Um, that's currently one.
I understand that, but the wording, the wording is identical, the, the...
The three lines are actually, same interest as actually the...
Ah, then that, that's our fault, sorry, we haven't, um, we haven't taken that out, apologies.
They are identical.
And I needed to read that twice as well, so I see that.
That's, that's quite right.
Quite right, well done.
Thank you, I'm not as stupid as I think.
Um, so can we make it clear that seventeen is dealing with a different animal than seventeen A, as it now reads? So there is the difference.
Yeah, apologies, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything else I need to add? I think Robin's already touched on the point regarding, you know, reformatting it to, to reflect the recent restructure.
Yeah. So, any more questions or comments? Can you therefore approve those amendments and recommend them to council?
Yep.
Understood?
Yep.
And I think, um, that concludes the agenda, we're not going to exceed the question public. If there's no turn off.